Okay.
It is now time for our December the second, twenty twenty-five work session to open. It appears as if we have one resolution and one presentation, and we will start with our presentation from Ms. Ally Routh from Opelika Chamber.
Hello, Council. This is on.
Can you, is it, okay, now it's on, okay. Hello, Council, thank you so much for allowing me to be here tonight. I have put in front of you a request that I hope does not actually have to be needed. It is a request for an alternative date for the Snopelika Christmas Friday and tree lighting to happen, tree lighting only, on Saturday evening, in the event that Friday evening's activities are truly just torrential rain pour drowned out and we're unable to have it. Our plan at the Opelika Chamber is to continue to, we're still planning to host everything on Friday night, rain or shine, even if it's a drizzle, but if tumultuous weather comes that prevents us from having, we would rather have an alternative date option. And so what you have in front of you is a street closure request that includes just the area right around Courthouse Square. We would not be able to host the parade on an alternative date. Too many of our partners are just not able to make that happen, but this is to allow us to still be able to host the tree lighting and all of the snowfall in Courthouse Square. So I have requested this very last minute addition, just so that we can have an alternative option in the event the weather does turn out to be worse than we would hope. I'm happy to answer any questions if that is appropriate.
So what time would the tree lighting?
We would keep the same timeline for Saturday, so the tree lighting would still happen at seven thirty PM on Saturday night if we were to move it. Right now, Plan A is, of course, to keep everything as planned. The parade starts at five thirty on Friday, the tree, uh, snowfall begins at six thirty, and then the tree lighting is at seven thirty. Plan B is to still keep everything on Friday night, but just cancel the parade, because if it's raining too much, you know, our floats won't be able to, to participate, but keep the tree lighting. And then Plan C is moving it to Saturday. So hopefully, we don't need this in any way, shape, or form, but I'd rather have it available in case it's needed than to just have to cancel it entirely if we do have torrential rain.
So if, if it has to be on Sa-
Mayor Smith, can you-
Microphone.
Please.
So if it has to be on Saturday, what, um, what streets have to be closed?
So it would just be, um, the parking lot around Courthouse Square. You should each have a packet in there that explains it, and then it would be Avenue B in front of First Baptist, and then, I believe, Ninth Street between, um, just those, those four streets, or two streets adjacent to Courthouse Square and the parking lot. But we wouldn't have to close down Eighth Street or any of the streets for the parade lineup. Our, our original street closure request was extensive because of all the parade lineup, but we will be making the decision, making a firm decision at nine AM, or ten AM on Friday morning. Two years ago, we canceled or moved Snopelika to a Sunday, and then that Friday night turned out to be a beautiful night. So we learned our lesson to not make that decision until the day of when the data for the weather is as clear and accurate as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what time would the street closure be on Saturday if it-
Saturday, we would keep the same timeline as everything, so we would close off the Courthouse Square parking lot at five AM to ensure there's no cars in the parking lot for, are set up, and then the streets adjacent would be closed at two PM. So two PM to nine PM. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we have one resolution from Mr. Master Eagle Scout Nicholas Brock.
Uh, first off, I want to give y'all some papers, just to basically explain my Eagle Scout project and the requirements and stuff. So, first off, I would like to, you know, thank you all for giving me this opportunity to be here today, and I would like to introduce myself again, if, you know, if you guys forgot, forgot about me. Uh, my name is Nicholas Brock. I'm a senior at Opelika High School. I run cross-country and track, and I was a dual-roman student at Southern Union, and my plan is to be a civil engineer, which is the reason why I wanted to build a gaga ball pit. I think this would be a good, a, a great opportunity to... Sorry, but, okay, let me start over, but I think it would be a great opportunity, a learning, uh, experience for me, you know, for being, trying to be a, a civil engineer. And I think this would, you know, be a great help if the community can help me financially and physically with this project. Not only that I have to lead this project, but I would have to teach others how to use tools safely and to build a stable, sustainable gaga ball pit for the people in Covington Rec Center.
Any, any questions for-
Yeah, any, any question.
Nicholas.
Nicholas, I will say, I had to ask my son what a gaga ball pit was, and he said it was cool, so, uh, he said we needed one, so, Mayor Smith, I know.
Actually, I asked.
Yeah, okay, he said we needed it.
I think a gaga ball pit is, you know, would be a great, you know, game to have at the Covington Rec, 'cause it's more like dodgeball, but it's more than just throwing the balls at somebody, so, and then every summer camp I went to, even if you ask the guys that goes to, uh, the summer camps with me, you'll know that every time they have a gaga ball pit there, we always there, and we always competing, and there's, there's a lot of teamwork that goes with it, so it really promotes, uh, a lot of good things.
I also think that gaga ball and with the youth, it will help, um, they're very fun. It's like music to the ear, to your ears when you hear the kids out playing. We just recently built one last year at Boys and Girls Club, and the kids really enjoy it, so for that demographic over there, that would be a great, um, thing for, to introduce to the community, as well as showing teamwork, team-building skills, and just the enjoyment and the excitement of the pit, so I, have you all already had the pricing of it, or?
The pricing? So I did my estimate, and it's about gonna be one thousand three hundred. I think it says it on one of those pages, but yeah, I think it's gonna be about one thousand three hundred.
And are you asking the support of the council, or is Parks and Recs-
No, no, I'm asking just by, uh, donators or companies, anybody that can help me out.
I think part of his project is the fundraising part of it, so, um, I think the resolution is just to give him permission to have the gaga pit on Covington Park's property.
And, and I do believe that Mr. Bell and his staff has done their due diligence and agreed that this would be a great asset to Covington Park.
We, we met over there with Nicholas, picked out a spot, and decided we got great place for it.
Thank you so very much, young man.
Thank you.
And thank y'all.
I'm looking forward to you teaching me how to play.
All right, I got you.
Thank you.
And thank you.
And if there's nothing else that's coming for the council, and the work session will close and open again in one minute for the regular meeting.
Well, you can go ahead and do it now, if you want to.
Is it?
Six o'clock?
It's, oh. It is now six o'clock, and I called our December second, uh, council meeting to order. Call the roll, Mr. Jones.
Ms. Holmes?
Here.
Ms. Walton?
Here.
Mr. Bean?
Here.
Mr. Routh?
Here.
Mr. Allen?
Here. And our pledge will be given to us, our invocation will be given us by Reverend Anthony Polk from the past of Bethesda Baptist Church, and our pledge of allegiance will, will be led by Eugene Benford, Anna Cup, Javier Perez, Sanaya Harris, and they're all from West Forest Intermediate School. May we stand for our invocation and pledge.
First, I want to say congratulations to our mayor and the new administration. Thank you guys for serving. Let us pray. Father God, I want to thank you first for the opportunity of us being here tonight. We know it was all in your hands, and we're grateful for that. Lord, we come this afternoon praying for our city. First of all, Lord, I want to say thank you for placing the spirit of serving in the hearts of those who, who are on this council and this mayor. We thank you for that. We're praying right now that you will let your will be in their hearts, Father God, that they may base their decisions on the things that you would have them to do, Father God, and we're grateful for that. Lord, we're praying right now just for, not just for our, our, our members of our government, Lord, but we're praying for our first responders, we're praying for our police department, we're praying for our fire department, and all of our city workers, Father God. We're praying that you cover this great city, Lord, as only you can. Allow your hand to continue to, to cover us, Lord, and let us be the light that you would have us to be. We're asking that you pierce all of our hearts this day, Master, that we are servants of yours and not of our own. We thank you, Master, and we pray for your continued blessings. It's in your Son Jesus Christ's name that I do pray. Let us all say amen.
Amen.
I do want to say something real quick. If you, if you want to take a picture, that way you don't get the back of their head. Come on. Y'all come take a picture. All right, y'all ready? Place a flag, cross a heart, y'all lead us. Ready? One, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, God. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, if we look to adopt an agenda that has been presented to us, are there any items that need to be added to, removed from, or changed to the order that presented agenda?
I will say that this is the time, if you would like to add the request from Ally Routh to the agenda to be approved, this would be the time to do it. So you would make a motion to add the item to the, to the agenda, under, and it would fall under General Business Item Number One. We would need a motion and a second, and then call the roll to add that item.
So moved. I move, or do I need to state the whole motion?
Yeah, no, you're, you're good, you're good.
Is that second?
Second.
All right. Discussion?
Are they discussing? Having none, call the roll.
Ms. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Walton?
Aye.
Mr. Bean?
Aye.
Mr. Routh?
Aye.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
All voted aye to add the item to General Business as Item Number One.
Okay.
That's that request for the backup date on Snopelika.
Now, I suppose we need a motion to, to accept the agenda with the added, or item.
Correct. I make a motion, we accept the amended agenda.
Is that second?
Second.
If, if we have a motion and a second, are they, are they in the discussion? If not, call the roll, Mr. Jones.
Ms. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Walton?
Aye.
Mr. Bean?
Aye.
Mr. Routh?
Aye.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
All voted aye to approve the adopted agenda.
The additional items will be placed on, as Item One, under General Business.
Yep, got it.
And, and you also been, or you received a copy of the minutes from our November eighteenth, our meeting? Is that motion for approval?
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions? Having none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. No unfinished business, we move to the mayor's comment and recognition. Mayor Smith.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to, uh, appoint Mr. Ben Bug to the Opelika Planning Commission, for a term to expire on February the fifteenth of two thousand and thirty. The city's financial reports, uh, should be in your packet. If you have any questions about those, call me or Cindy Boyd or Joey, and we'll try to answer them. At this point, I'd like to invite, uh, Sam Bailey to the front, and, uh, Bubba and Michelle Dean.
Mayor, would you like to have all the representatives from the Miracle League come with them for the picture as well?
Absolutely, yes, please.
Did you want to bring up, Bubba? Big check.
Big check.
Big check.
Big check.
There you go. Perfect.
So, Sam, tell us what's going on here.
Well, as you know, we need a new surface on the Miracle League out at West Ridge, and the Miracle League group has been holding on to and raising, I guess, this money to help with that project, so they're donating forty thousand dollars towards the resurfacing of the Miracle League field. We're certainly appreciative.
You know, the, uh, thank you would be not the right words to express our appreciation. Looked over at Mayor Patton, uh, as, as Sam was talking about this, and I think forty thousand dollars is about what we spent on the Miracle League, Miracle Field, when we did it, did it, whatever it was, fifteen years ago, and for you guys to step up and, and resurface it touches us as a community. So thank you very much for, for doing that, and we promise that we'll treat it right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go get a picture.
Three, one, two, three.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
And we do have the right, it's a real check. Already.
That's important, too.
Here goes Sam. A little spot on mine. Yeah, I'll go in the next one now. Aye, awesome.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Kenny, how you doing? Good to see you, my friend. At this point, I would like to invite Christie Smith, the president of the Opelika Pickleball Club, to come join Sam and I.
Have a good day. There you go.
Okay, Sam, Christie, tell us what's going on here.
Well, uh, the Pickleball Club is donating fifty thousand dollars back. We realized the original twelve courts we built, the lighting was probably not up to where it should have been, but nobody had a facility like that, and we really didn't know how to do it, so this is just an additional amount of lighting that's going in to bring that court up to the standards needed, and the Pickleball Club's donating fifty thousand dollars toward that project.
Thank you. Got to get a picture, and so, so now we have, how many courts?
We have twenty-four completed, covered, and lighted, and we're in the process of having nine more.
And that's, uh, if you are not aware of, of what has gone on with pickleball in Opelika, Alabama, I think it's put us on the map, and, uh, I think that people from all over the country are enjoying the opportunity to come to Opelika, and we're certainly enjoying the opportunity furthering to come to Opelika, and it's all got to do with pickleball, and so we, we thank you, Christian, and thank you, Sam, for your leadership and, uh, continued commitment that the city, or that the Pickleball Association has made to the city in giving dollars back to help us maintain those courts, so thank you very much.
I'm very proud, we have six hundred and forty-eight active members. We just had a new member who just joined, who just moved to Opelika because of pickleball.
Thank you. You got the real check on that one.
I got the real check.
Public hearings, Mr. Jones?
Mr. President, first item under public hearings is a public hearing to approve the First Amendment to a broad metro development agreement.
I declare this public hearing open. If there's anyone who wants to speak far or against this item, please come to the podium to my left and state your name and address, and remember you have three minutes to speak. Having none, I declare this public hearing closed.
Second public hearing is to approve the First Amendment to the Mila Manufacturing Project Agreement.
I declare this public hearing open. If there's anyone to speak far or against this item, please come to the podium to my left and state your name and address, and remember you have three minutes to speak. Having none, I declare this public hearing closed.
Third and final public hearing is to amend the zoning ordinance and map of twenty fifty-one Alabama Highway one sixty-nine. It's forty-eight point zero six acres from a R-one to a C-three.
I declare this public hearing open. If there's anyone who wants to speak far or against this item, please come to the podium to my left and state your name and address, and remember you have three minutes to speak. Having none, I declare this public hearing closed. Agenda-related public comments, Mr. Jones?
If you would like to speak to the mayor and council about anything that is on tonight's agenda, please come to the podium to my left. If you have not, please sign in a sign-in sheet, name, telephone, address, email. If you do speak, please state your name and your address, and please keep it to three minutes or less. Thanks.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Aaron Bushy, four oh eight South Eighth Street. I'm here tonight to, uh, over my concerns over the, uh, the movement of the, the date for Snopelika. I don't know what the true information is. The information I heard earlier in the day is different than what it was, was presented, uh, later this evening by Ms. Routh, but, uh... Those of us who operate businesses in Opelika have no communication with what is going to happen many times, and, uh, you show up at your business, and all of a sudden, your business is closed. If I happened, I just happened to hear about this, and it's, it's very frustrating when, you don't know how to prepare when you're, you know, if your street's closed on Saturday during Christmas season, you're gonna lose a lot of money, you're gonna lose customers, and they may or may not use the date, I get that, but, uh, it, there's no communication, there's no dialogue, there's, there's no way to, uh, find a resolution that would be beneficial to both of us, or all of us. I mean, the, the well will be impacted, the Cersei shop will be impacted, the, the businesses on Eighth use parking like, uh, Davis Man and DeBree's Way, everybody's impacted, and because you're, you're closing the, uh, the streets down completely. So if people come in from out of town and they see everything's closed, they just keep on moving, so, this is a, it's cumulative, I've talked to several of you about this, uh, in the past, but, uh, events that impact businesses should be discussed with the businesses prior to bringing it to City Council, getting it passed, and then we find out after the fact. So I'm asking you to consider either denying the request, finding another date, or some sort of medium where it's not going to close the entire street for the entire day right before Christmas. So thank you for your time, appreciate it.
General business, Mr. Jones?
Oh, we're going to consent agenda, Mr. President.
Oh, okay. You're, council, you received a, a copy of this consent agenda? Do you, do any of you wish to remove any item, uh, to be addressed in our regular, on our regular agenda? Having none, is that motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
In the discussion? Having none, call the roll, Mr. Jones?
Ms. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Walton?
Aye.
Mr. Bean?
Aye.
Mr. Routh?
Aye.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
All voted aye to approve the unanimous consent agenda.
So we'll do general business?
Now we're general business, yes, and you did add an item to general business tonight. Number one is the request for downtown street closure for the Snopelika and tree lighting on Saturday, December sixth, as the backup date.
Is that motion for approval?
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
In the discussion?
Yes. The, um, so I know he was saying that some of the business will be impacted, but I'm looking at a packet, are these, is this the same packet where they have, the business have assigned, or signed that will be affected and agreed to it that's in the back, um, for the new date?
I, I'd have to check with Ms. Routh, but it seems to me like that was for the all of downtown that was originally done, is that correct? So that was the original signed off, but that's for the Friday, that's not for the Saturday.
Okay. And so is the proposal that, um, is the gentleman that spoke about it, is it the well or the front street that, um, is it being impacted, or?
His business is almost anything. We just don't, Eighth Street beside the courthouse.
Yeah.
Or Ninth Street, excuse me, on Ninth Street.
Yeah.
The well is on Avenue A.
Yeah, I know.
And then you got almost anything, and then what the request says is all the way up to Eighth Street. Now, that does cut off the parking lot behind all those businesses that face Eighth Street, so I don't know if they want to adjust that and move that closer. I don't know if they just want to do the parking lots, I, I mean, that's up to, that's up to between y'all and them, and, I mean, I don't know.
I was just wondering if we could do, um, do the, leave that street open? Would it be conducive to leave the street open and just block out the parking lot on that?
I mean, yeah, you, you can explain why you need the street, sure.
Again, I do want to reiterate that we do not plan to and do not want to use this date. I'm not sure where that information came from, because I was not communicated to or asked about that today at all, but this is a backup, truly, um, the plan and hope is that everything happens as expected on Friday, um, and all of those signatures, including, we visited every business, including almost anything, to notify them of that first date. So, um, this is, um, the reason that we try to close the streets around Courthouse Square is because you have a lot of children running around and playing in all of the snowfall, which goes up to the curbs. We've moved all the food trucks to the parking lot area, so that that's kind of out of the streets. That had caused a lot of our street closures in the vicinity of, um, Snopelika last year, and we've moved that into the parking lot, but, um, right now, we're still working out the potential logistics of, um, moving, adding some tents right there along that for some of our sponsors and, and people that, if they cannot participate in a parade, need a space to be able to still, um, experience the event and share information, and so if you would prefer not to close that down, we certainly would respect that decision, but we included closing that street down merely for a safety perspective and follow the kind of recommendations of, of the police department and EMA from that, and we've, we have always closed that block, um, even when it was, um, just a Courthouse Square activity, we had closed that one street, but the First Baptist Parking Lot- But the First Baptist Parking Lot adjacent to Ninth Street and Avenue B would still be open. The parking lot at the courthouse would still be open, which would be adjacent to the surgery shop as well. So it doesn't go all the way to Tenth Street, which is our original street closures for Snopilika close all the way to Tenth Street and all the way to Sixth Street, or to Seventh Street. So it's a much, much bigger impact than this one.
And just remind me, you're saying the streets would be closed at five AM?
No, the parking lot.
The worst case?
The Courthouse Square Parking Lot would be closed at five AM, because we have a lot of things getting set up in that vicinity. The street closure would start at two PM. We could possibly look at moving that back if needed, because again, we're not, we're not having parade lineup happening in that area, so we could certainly explore pushing that back to maybe four or five PM, so that we're just closing it right before the activities begin.
I think in your packet you submitted, you said nine AM on the packet. So we need to adjust that, if you're saying two. Because I believe the packet you gave me said nine AM. Is that not correct?
I'm reading it.
The street closure application? Are you, do y'all have the packet?
Just time to set up barricade block, nine AM.
Yeah.
Nine AM, okay, that.
Says nine AM.
Then that is a, that is an error, so I apologize for that.
So you're saying two o'clock would?
Correct. Two o'clock is, was the actual time that should have been written on that form.
But can you push it back to five o'clock? Would that be feasible?
I do think that, as long as we can continue to close the parking lot at five AM, I think the streets could be moved till later, for sure.
And what time does the business close on Saturday?
We close at five, but it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
That's, that's more than sufficient. I think maybe four o'clock, if that's easier for you.
Sure.
So are we gonna change it to four or five?
Let's change it to four PM. That would be great. Thank you.
So do we need another motion?
No, I got it. I got it.
In other discussion? If not, call the roll, Mr. Jones?
Okay, this is to approve the street closure for the backup date at four PM
Right.
to nine PM.
Right.
Ms. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Watley?
Aye.
Mr. Beams?
Aye.
Mr. Routh?
Aye.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution, Mr. Treese?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have as resolution number one, expense reports from various folks, council members, for your approval. That one's pretty simple, should be in your packets.
Is that motion for approval? Is that second?
Second.
In the discussion? Having none, call the roll, Mr. Jones?
Ms. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Watley?
Aye.
Mr. Beams?
Aye.
Mr. Routh?
Aye.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Mr. President, the second resolution is to approve the acceptance of a settlement and release in relation to a class action lawsuit of which the city of Opalika is but a very small part. There were, because the city sometimes accepts Discover cards as payment, the company itself, Discover, had apparently mischaracterized some of those accounts anuring to the benefit of anybody but the city of Opalika. So they've prepared a settlement agreement. There were two lawsuits filed. They were all transferred to Cook County, Illinois. It's nominal amounts, but we're asking that you approve signing off on that settlement, and we'll get what we get.
Is that motion for approval?
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
In the discussion? Having none, call the roll, Mr. Jones?
Ms. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Watley?
Aye.
Mr. Beams?
Aye.
Mr. Routh?
Aye.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Mr. President, item number three is a resolution to approve the First Amendment of a broad metro development agreement.
Is that motion for approval?
So moved.
Is that second? Is that second? Is that second?
Second.
In the discussion? Having none, call the roll, Mr. Jones?
Ms. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Watley?
Aye.
Mr. Beams?
Aye.
Mr. Routh?
Aye.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Mr. President, the fourth resolution is to approve a First Amendment to the Mila Manufacturing Project Agreement, resulting in a delay.
Is that motion for approval?
A motion to approve.
Is that second?
Second.
In the discussion? Having none, call the roll, Mr. Jones?
Ms. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Watley?
Aye.
Mr. Beams?
Aye.
Mr. Routh?
Aye.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number five, Mr. President, is the annual appropriation contract for fiscal year twenty twenty-six with the Opalika Chamber of Commerce in the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Is that motion for approval?
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
In the discussion?
Discussion. I will be abstaining from this vote due to my relationship with the president of the Opalika Chamber of Commerce. Mr. City Clerk, if you could have a signed resolution and send it to the State Ethics Commission, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Routh. In other discussion? Having none, call the roll, Mr. Jones?
Ms. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Watley?
Aye.
Mr. Beams?
Aye.
Mr. Routh?
Abstain.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
Four ayes, one abstain, motion carries.
Ordinance is, Mr. Treese?
We have one more resolution, Mr. President.
I'm sorry.
This resolution is to approve the twenty twenty-five Christmas holiday schedule for city employees.
So moved.
Is that motion for approval?
My bad.
Is that second?
Second.
In the discussion? Having none, call the roll, Mr. Jones?
Ms. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Watley?
Aye.
Mr. Beams?
Aye.
Mr. Routh?
Aye.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
All voted aye to approve.
Ordinance is, Mr. Treese?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, the first ordinance is before you for second reading. It's to amend the zoning ordinance of the city and the map at one four zero one Speedway Drive. It's one point nine three three acres from an R-five M to a C-two.
Is that motion for approval?
So moved.
Is that second?
Second.
In the discussion? Having none, call the roll, Mr. Jones?
Ms. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Watley?
Aye.
Mr. Beams?
Aye.
Mr. Routh?
Aye.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
All voted aye to approve.
The second ordinance, Mr. President, is to amend the zoning ordinance in map at twenty fifty-one Alabama Highway one sixty-nine, consisting of forty-eight point zero six acres. That would change it from an R-one to a C-three. This is the first reading.
I would like to ask a member of the council to introduce his ordinance for the first reading.
Granted.
Thank you. Second roster of public comments.
So now, if you'd like to speak to the mayor or council about anything else, please come to the podium to my left. Please sign in the sign-in sheet, if you have not done so already, name, telephone, address, email. If you do speak, state your name and your address.
I'm good, I'm good. Y'all even knew that shit. I'm gonna sue you, you know that. Y'all, all witnesses.
State your name and your address, and keep to three minutes or less.
Yo first suit since being mayor.
All right.
No comment.
No comment.
My name's Matti Clark. I live at seven oh six Orchard Avenue, Opalika, Alabama. I keep coming for these bad houses. There's one on the corners of Orchard Avenue. You can hardly find the address. But the window's out, paper is in the windows, and there's a little old white lady that lives there. Nobody should be allowed to live there. But I know y'all can't do anything about it, but y'all do know the person that's over these houses. And there's also one on Martin Luther King on the corner there. It's tore all up, too. I don't know who's supposed to be riding around checking on these houses besides me, but I don't, I don't work. Y'all didn't appoint me up here. If you had, I would have taken it out. But I don't know who y'all appointed. But whoever's appointed to see about these houses, they are not doing the job. So would somebody check on these houses and check on that little lady that's living in that house, because it's cold? Thank you very much. I'm still gonna see.
I know. Come see me.
Good evening, council. My name is Bradley Haddon. I live at eighteen oh five Archer Court here in Opalika. Hello, I'm Bradley Haddon, Top Shelf Alternatives. I'm speaking tonight in regards to the moratorium I brought up at the last city council meeting that the city has put in place. As we're getting closer to December fifteenth deadline, I am desperately trying to forecast my business moving forward into next year. And not knowing if I will be allowed to operate in the city or not is the first of many decisions I must take into account in deciding the future of my small business. There are multiple pieces to this new bill between the ABC Board and just the city in general, all moving at once, and it has left most store owners in a state of limbo. I'm trying my best, you know, to get all my ducks in a row leading into next year. What that means, you know, so I know what that means for my business. The moratorium is step one. I urge the council to add the moratorium to current business and vote to remove or extend it, so I can make an informed decision for the future of Top Shelf Alternatives. As always, thank you for your time, and I look forward to hearing from you all. If you have questions, I'll take them if that's something you do.
The character trait of the month is generosity, the quality of being kind and generous, showing a readiness to give more of something that is strictly necessary or expected. I would now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
In the discussion? None? Call the roll.
Ms. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Watley?
Aye.